I will do a roll call to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Chairperson Shoka?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Bertrand?
Yes.
Secretary Leighton? Is he muted again?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Levesque?
Hi.
And Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Also with us for this meeting are the business manager, Mr. Michael Cassidy.
Yes.
Our special service director, Juliana Hanscom.
Juliana's muted.
Our IT director, Steve Malandrinos.
Yes.
And the recording secretary, Ms. Sue Summers.
Yes.
Okay, so good morning. In accordance with the requirements of open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. And this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee is being conducted remotely. The town of Lunenburg, in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus, is currently following the guidance from the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread. And all town facilities are currently closed to the public. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A subsection 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the town website, website on the COVID-19 Information Center page, access through the town manager's webpage allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lunenburg School Committee is convening by telephone conference, video conference, via Zoom app, Facebook Live, et cetera, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. For Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that they and take care not to be to screen, share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting business ground rules. We are now turning to the first items on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Heather Shroka, the chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquially with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. With that said, we'll go on to first public comment for agenda items. Do we have any public comments? Do we know we have pub comm, we have public attending? Do we know if anyone wants to make public comment?
So Heather, this is Jim Levesque. On the agenda, it says that participants that want to speak can do star nine to request to speak, or they can raise the hand feature on the Zoom app. In case anybody is unaware of how to do that, because everybody's muted at the moment.
Yes, I see everyone is muted.
I don't see any hands raised. Just as a safeguard, I'm going to unmute everybody right now, so if anybody wants to speak.
Yeah, I saw somebody said no comment on Facebook that they're watching, so she has no public comment. We don't need to unmute, pack. So Mrs. LeBlanc?
Hi.
Hi, do you have any public comments?
I, I don't, just thank you, and I'm happy that I could log in. And the teachers have been working really hard, as your administrators will say, so.
Mr. Beardmore, do you have any public comment?
Hey, good morning. No, I do not. Thank you for asking, though.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Beardmore. Mrs. Smith, do you have any public comment? Mrs. Smith? No. Mr. Passios?
None at this time, thank you.
Okay, great, thanks so much, Mr. Passios.
All right, I'm going to mute everybody again and then unmute the members.
And then? Wait, Carol's muted, Brian, and Wendy. Wendy, do you have any public comment?
No, I do not.
Carol, do you have any public comment?
Not at this time.
Jim, do you have any public comment?
No, thank you.
Okay, Brian is still muted. Then he has no public comment. Okay. So the superintendent's report?
So give you an update on the budget timeline. The town manager will be examining the impact of COVID-19 on revenues. We're uncertain at this time what the impact will be to the town's FY21 budget. Once we have some additional guidance from the town manager, we'll be able to inform you and bring a recommended budget before you. An update on food insecurity. The U.S. Department of Agriculture has approved the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's request to waive the requirement that school meal sites must be located in areas where at least 50% of school lunch program participants are eligible for free and reduced-priced meals. Therefore, all school districts that are distributing meals during school closure related to COVID-19 and are focusing the distribution of these meals to children and teens in need of them are now eligible for USDA reimbursement. Our grab-and-go breakfast-lunch packages are distributed on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. We are currently serving an average of 90 to 100 students on Monday and Wednesday, and Fridays we serve approximately 125. We have received no new guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education regarding MCAS testing or the Student Opportunity Act plans that are required to be submitted. Any changes to those two items require legislative action, and I know that they will be working on it, but at this point, we haven't had an update as to any outcome there. I'd like to acknowledge that and thank all of our families for their patience and understanding these last three weeks. We all recognize the challenges of working remotely while serving in the role of surrogate teacher for your children who are at home. I also want to thank our staff, who have kept the focus on our students and their well-being. Teachers have been very eager to reconnect with their students. I want to thank them for all they have done these last few weeks to prepare for remote learning. Their investment and commitment to this transition has really been inspiring. They have really come together and worked extraordinarily well as teams, and I'm very thankful for that. And then I'm going to turn things over just to Mr. Cassidy for a moment for an update regarding the business office. Things are very fluid. Things are changing very rapidly, and he would have the most up-to-date information on things that are impacting the business office, so I'll have him give a little bit of an update there. Mr. Cassidy?
Good day, everyone. I hope everyone is healthy and safe. Just a couple updates, further updates on the memorandum that I sent last school committee meeting. Just, just a reminder to, to school staff and teachers and paraprofessionals that you're not allowed in the building. The only people that are allowed in the building are custodians. TCP is still open for internal business only. Many administrative staffs are rotating, working remotely from home. We're still processing invoices so that our vendors can be paid, so we're checking the mail and moving payments forward to Town Hall. Our CAF staff is still reporting to the high school to prepare, to prepare our grab-and-go lunches and meals. And just a reminder, our central office team is meeting regularly to go over any changes or directives, and are just general check-ins on how things are going. I just want to, a point of clarification, this is mostly an HR thing, you know, as we move forward this week, we understand employees will normally get sick for non-virus-related illnesses. In, in those instances, they may call in sick. So, but we'll manage the coverage, especially if it's a long-term absence. So we are working closely with our principals on those day-to-day absences. Kind of want to give an update on some of our projected costs for our food service program. I am projecting that a, the grab-and-go program, as it stands right now, which is serving, you know, approximately 100 meals per day, is, is going to be costing the district about $36,300. That is, that is providing a meal through April vacation, the five days in April vacation and through the last day of school. That doesn't, and that's presuming that, that we're out through the, the end of the school year, and that we're getting no indication that that's the case. But that is what I'm projecting through the end of the year. At some point, we'll have to consider, as guidance comes through DESI and through the federal government, whether or not we prolong that or expand it to other residents in the town. Some of our salary and wages account, if this is projected through the year, we've got cafeteria workers at $75,400, and then our extended day program was providing some online services for, for parents. We're projecting that to be about $44,800. So those are some, I'll continue to provide updates on, on those projections as, as we go through our meeting in the springtime. One little project that I, I don't have a complete update for the school committee on is our busing contract. So at the last meeting, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education really discouraged districts from paying vendors for services not received. So they had a slate 180 on that, and they said to work with our partners and try to negotiate some sort of payment with those. And the group that I'm specifically talking about is our school bus contract, our DBUS. So at this point, we, meaning the superintendent and I, are not bringing forth any recommendations or actions to the school committee. Business managers that, who are working with DBUS are checking in this week to get a, a feeling of where they are financially and operationally. If we move forward to some sort of recommendation, either the business managers and, and the superintendents, that will likely be at the next meeting. But that's, that's the, the slight update that I'm providing to the school committee this week. So no action on that. Still continue to have a purchasing freeze, except for our health and safety purchases and our grab-and-go program, and any supports for our online learning program. We still have the hiring freeze, and we're not proposing any options for this meeting. And just want to, just highlight the FY21 budget processes. The town manager is presenting a, or is having a public hearing on May 7th on the town budget. I did reach out to her yesterday, and we'll be working closely over the next week on, on trying to create a budget for the school committee to, to look at and approve. As we, as we kind of define those conversations or timelines, the superintendent and I will reach out to you and likely schedule meetings to present our revised budget to you. But at this time, I, I don't have those dates. So a very preliminary conversation yesterday. Obviously, we've got to back in your approval before we, we move forward. So stay tuned for that. We'll work very closely with you as that information becomes available and as the numbers become more clear, either from the state level or through the town level. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy. Okay, so first, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Cassidy? Wendy?
No.
No, no one? Carol?
No.
Brian? All right, so we're going to first do our new business is the suspension of policy number 3701.01. Superintendent, can you just tell us what that is and what we, why we would be suspending it at this time?
This policy has to do with the, the food lunch program and unpaid balances. As part of the policy, we're supposed to send notices to families who have a balance that is in the negative. And given the current circumstances, you know, with so many people facing unemployment at this time, we thought it was insensitive for us to continue to send notices while schools are closed. And we're really recommending that you consider suspending this policy through the closure period, whatever, whenever that might conclude.
Okay, so if when, if we were to open back up in May, they would start back up in May? We, not to the end of the school year, it would just be the end of the closures?
I think that, I think that we could revisit it if, if the committee were interested in continuing to suspend this policy. But my original request really was to consider suspending the policy through the duration of the closure.
Okay, does anyone have any objections or questions in regards to that? Wendy? No, no. Carol? No.
The only thing I would have, this is Jim Levesque, for those on the phone. The only thing I would ask is if there were ways for the community, because I know this community steps up, if there are ways for them to make a direct donation to some of those, those over.
Yeah. Yeah.
Or maybe, you know, if, if, I'll talk to fellow parents of seniors, if your child's lunch balance is going to be excessive leftover at the end of this year, perhaps you might consider donating that as well. So if there's, if there's an opportunity to do that, that may be something we need to look into, logistically, how to, how to handle those kinds of things. But.
I might, I might mention that we've been approached by some of our staff who would like to organize a different version of the gift card drive that we do during the holiday time. This gift card drive would be to collect gift cards to Hanaford Market Basket, even Target has Foods, local restaurants that are still doing takeout service, because in that way, we're also supporting our local businesses. So we're looking at the logistics of that. We, we really have been working on so many other, you know, priority logistics in the last couple of weeks now that we've made some decisions to move forward with different things. We can start thinking about the logistics of planning a, a drive like that.
And how would those, yeah, the logistics would be how would those cards be distributed? And who are they distributing them to?
So they would do this the same way that they approach the gift card drive at the holiday time. We know the students, the families that are eligible, and, and that information is confidential, so it would be handled discreetly.
So in regards to policy 3701.01, I'd like to take a motion that we waive that policy until the end of the closures.
I can make a motion. Ashambo, I'll make a motion to suspend policy 3701 dot oh one until the end of the school closure.
This is Jim Levesque, our second.
All in favor? We need a roll call.
Mrs. Ashambo?
I.
Mrs. Bertrand?
I.
Mr. Levesque?
Hi.
Mr. Leighton?
Hi.
And Mrs. Shroka?
Yes. Okay, and then we are moved on to the old business, which is this transition from enrichment to remote learning. And how, how that, who developed it, how it was developed, and what parents could, might see in the coming weeks for their students. I know that I have a lot of questions about it and how we're going to be moving forward. And I'm sure that some of the other school committee members have a lot of questions in regards to how we could see that in the next few weeks. So I'm going to turn that to Dr. Burham.
So last evening, I sent a, a letter to families to update them as to what the transition from enrichment learning to remote learning will look like. We, we want to be able to move forward in a way that is equitable, that all of our students can access their learning. And over the last couple of weeks, we surveyed our families, grades K through seven, because our eight through 12 already are participating in a one-to-one program. They all have Chromebooks. So we surveyed the families, and we were looking to see how many had no access to a device or how many of them had limited access to a device because there are multiple members in the household sharing one device. Once we took a look at the, the results that came in from that survey, you know, we knew that we would have enough devices that had previously been located in Chromebook carts in our schools to distribute those Chromebooks to these particular families. I still have maybe about 50 Chromebooks waiting for families to come and pick them up, and we're continuing to try to connect with these families. In some cases, families don't have the means to come to the school to pick them up, and we have delivered devices to the home or through the grab-and-go pickup. When, when folks are picking up their lunches, they might be able to pick their Chromebook up at that time. Additionally, we have staff who are delivering our grab-and-go lunches out to families that can't get to the school to pick them up. And occasionally, we have delivered a Chromebook with the grab-and-go to the home. Again, we continue to work to reach out to families. We didn't, we did not get 100% participation in, in the survey, but we, we are continuing to reach out to families to ensure that we can provide them a means to access the learning. I feel comfortable at this point that we have done that to the best of our ability at this time. We will continue, but I think at this point, we have enough students who, all the students that have reached out have the means to, to access the learning. Over the last couple of weeks, anticipating that, you know, we needed to move beyond enrichment, none of the, the teachers are happy with, you know, holding pat with an enrichment model, but that was what we were asked to do by the Commissioner of Education for the initial three-week closure period. Last week, you know, we actually prior, even prior to last week, we were looking at different platforms that we could use to provide instruction to students remotely. Many of our teachers currently use Google Classroom. Given that Google Classroom is a, an app that was created by Google for education, you know, we feel that it, it keeps us compliant with regulations around protecting children on the internet. We also looked at Google Meet, which is a platform similar to Zoom, so that teachers can connect with their students in real time. We, again, tested, we had people explore that program because we had not used it prior and tested from the, the end of the, the teacher and from the user end, the student end, to see how this would work, making sure that there were safeguards in place. And we feel comfortable at this point that Google Meet provides that kind of safeguard for us. I can tell you that Zoom as a platform, you know, almost immediately upon school closure, they reached out to educators, school districts, and were providing the service free. But I can tell you that the parameters of their platform can continue to change as they try to juggle the demand that has been put on them by so many users coming on board and troubleshooting some, some challenges as well. There was an FBI advisory that came out last week relative to some of these Zoom meetings and instruction being Zoom bombed, where people are able to access the meeting. So it's, it's of concern. We want to make sure that whatever platform we're using, we feel that it, that it's safe for our students to, to be on. We, we feel that the Zoom platform, at least for right now, we have. Um, we, we feel that the Zoom platform, at least for right now, we have, um, already started to move forward and can, continue having our IEP meetings, at least our annual IEP meetings. Um, we're doing that through Zoom, and that seems to be working out pretty well right now. Um, there is a possibility that we, we may consider switching over to the Meet platform. Um, but for now, we are using Zoom for these meetings. Um, we're also currently using Zoom for meetings, uh, of the leadership team, uh, department head meetings, building leadership team meetings. Uh, principals have returned to having faculty meetings through this platform. So, um, you know, we find that this is, uh, fine for our, our needs when we're working with adults. Um, it's very easy to use. Um, and, you know, we've had staff members earlier this week doing all of that work to explore Google Meet, how that works, is it the right platform, et cetera, learning how to use it, so that they could then teach it to our teachers. We have teachers who, um, have been using Google Classroom, who have stepped up and provided trainings for our teachers and how to use Google Classroom at the beginner level, at an intermediate level. Um, we also know that sometimes teachers may want to video record a mini lesson. Um, Google Meet has that capacity. You can record and post a meeting, I mean, post on Google Meet or on your classroom, um, a video recording that you have done of yourself as a, as a teacher, not an interactive recording. Interactive recordings, uh, introduce a whole host of, of other issues for legal consideration. Um, and given that we're not sure about the duration of this closure, um, I, I've just, for simplicity, ruled out that, uh, we will not be recording any Google Meet sessions, live interaction with teachers and students. No recording of, of those sessions. Teachers can use that tool to record themselves providing instruction and post that. The other format that we, um, are going to use for recording instruction, uh, to be posted for students to view is, um, YouTube. So we've also been providing trainings this week for teachers on how to use and use YouTube to, uh, record videos of instruction and how to then take that video and post it. Um, I think that covers all of the platforms that we explored. Teachers, of course, can, um, also use their own cell phones to make recordings of their instruction, uh, and post those videos. So we're trying to help teachers, um, learn tools that will help them be effective in, in their teaching remotely. Um, you know, it, it's, you can be an excellent teacher in a classroom setting on campus, and that skill set, um, oftentimes is honed over years. We are all now novices because we are all now teaching and operating in a medium that is brand new to all of us. Some teachers who, you know, I, I would consider a, a little bit more advanced in terms of, you know, using instructional technology in their classrooms on a, on a fairly regular basis are, uh, poised to make an easier transition to this platform. But for many, many of our teachers, particularly our teachers at the primary school level, this is a very difficult transition. They were, all of these platforms are, are unfamiliar to them, all of the things that I just described to you, Google Classroom, Google Meet, YouTube, all unfamiliar to our primary school teachers. There's, there was a need for a lot of preparation for our staff to be able to transition well. Um, you know, I would, I would ask folks to, you know, be patient, uh, as teachers get more comfortable with the platform and the tools that they can use. And I would expect that, um, you know, over, over time, a short time, teachers will be able to ramp up the ways in which they are, um, interacting and presenting material to students remotely. Um, we have, from day one, been operating under the, the recommendations that have come from the Commissioner and the Department of Ed. Um, most, the most recent set of recommendations, uh, were all signed on, uh, to by the Commissioner, the MTA Teacher Union, the AFT Teacher Union, the PTA, the Mass Association of School Superintendents, and the Mass Association of School Committees. So given that those are the recommendations that were endorsed by all stakeholders, those are the recommendations that, that we're operating under moving forward. The one thing I would say that we have veered from the guidance on is that the Commissioner, and, and he's very, very driven by equity concerns. He is providing guidance for the entire state. It's important that we try to move forward as best we can in unison as a state. Um, because if we don't, there's all kinds of implications down the road, how students perform on MCAS tests, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, I think it's very important for us to continue to operate under the guidance that comes from the Commissioner. Again, we're veering in that, you know, through conversation, uh, with representatives from, from the Teacher Union, uh, we're all on the same page. We feel that we don't, we're not sure what the duration of the closure is going to be at this point. You know, right now, we're looking to return on May fourth. But we didn't want to set this up with that limited time period because there's a possibility that in the next couple of weeks, we will have another announcement from the Governor that extends the closure period. So we wanted to be able to roll out from day one with the long view in mind. And if we are going to be operating remotely, worst-case scenario, through the, the end of the year into June, that's a lot of time to stay with enrichment. And that was the guidance of the Commissioner. Stay with enrichment. We know that if we're out for that extended period of time, that's a lot of ground that we're losing in terms of instruction on standards, practice of skills, et cetera. Additionally, we want students to be excited about logging on every day. And if you're going to stay pat with enrichment at some point, and, and I don't think it would be too far from now, actually, what's the motivation for students to, to continue to log on and engage in a meaningful way? We want to continue to move forward with instruction, new instruction. In doing so, we have to consider, um, the pace with which we move, again, based on the guidance that has come from the Commissioner, a, again, endorsed by all parties, that, um, we should be looking to provide this instruction for approximately half of the school day, which was, is roughly about three hours. It doesn't make sense educationally, developmentally, that we would put all of our students in front of a computer for six hours a day. So in thinking about that we're, we're going to be, uh, you know, designing instruction for a smaller window of time, we recognize that pacing-wise, we will not likely complete this year's curriculum, even, even moving forward. Teachers are working collaboratively either in, um, content areas or grade-level teams to prioritize which standards need, need to be covered, um, in the, in the best interest of advancing the students and making them ready for the next grade or the next course in that area. Um, I think it's important for us to continue to move forward with new instruction because it, it, it lessens that gap of, um, instruction on standards that teachers next year will have to backfill. We want to move through as much of this year's curriculum as we can. So that is the, the one area that, that we're going to move, uh, forward, um, outside of, of the recommendations from the Commissioner. Again, but, you know, it's, teachers want to be able to teach. We want our students to learn. We want our students to be motivated to engage in their learning. Um, our expectation moving forward is that, um, teachers will be posting work. They will have some, some type of, um, assignment, even if it's just the equivalent of a, um, uh, a do-now or, um, a warm-up, uh, an exit ticket, something that the kids log on daily and complete. There will be other assignments that are posted, um, to be completed over several days' time because, again, we know that there are households out there where there are multiple students and not enough devices for them to operate one-to-one. Um, so we, we know that students may have a, a challenge, um, getting things done in, within a 24-hour period, any assignments that are, uh, more hefty. Um, I think you know, there, there may be students who are able to advance at a, a, a stronger pace. Um, you know, some of our honors courses at the high school level, as an example, may be able to move forward at, at a, a stronger pace. Actually, all of our high school should be able to move forward with a, with a quicker pace because we know that those students were provided a device. Um, in some cases, though, they may have younger siblings that are sharing that device at this time. Um, we do expect that students are going to log on daily. We do expect that students are going to do the assignments that are posted. Um, in accordance with the guidance, the recommendations from the Commissioner, though, um, he would like this period of time to be, um, one where students are provided feedback, um, for their own growth. And, um, these assignments should not be graded in the traditional sense. He would, he would want to see districts in this quarter move to a model of credit, no credit. That in itself presents a lot of challenges for us to figure out. How, how then do you figure out the overall grade for the year? How does this, uh, look, um, in Power School? What, how does this look on a transcript? Are there concerns about, um, negative impact for our seniors or even our juniors who will be applying to schools to see that, um, credit reported, um, for that, for that last quarter rather than a numeric grade? Our guidance staff have reached out to colleges and universities, including Harvard. All of the colleges and universities are experiencing the same thing we are. They recognize that this is not, it's not a Lunenburg challenge. It's not even just a Massachusetts challenge. This is a national challenge. This is happening in states all over. They know that states are maybe going to approach things in different ways. They are taking all of that into consideration, and they have reassured us that no student will be penalized in any way, shape, or form. They look at the whole student and their accomplishments. So we'll continue to, um, you know, work through the details of how this is all reported, um, in, in terms of a, a, a transcript. Um, but we are going to move forward with that, with that guidance. The challenge becomes, um, and, and this is the, the guidance we're getting, um, again, from the Commissioner's office, but there is a Commissioner at DESI for special education. And they are in communication with the Department of Ed at the federal level, getting guidance around IDEA and the laws around special ed services. Um, the problem for all districts, if you move forward with business as usual, and the only difference is that instead of having twenty children in chairs in front of a teacher on campus, and now we have twenty students logged on to their devices with a student, but they're getting the same curriculum at the same pace, with the same assignments, with, um, grading as normal, essentially, we haven't modified a thing, then we cannot modify anything that we do for our special ed students. We have to deliver their services as outlined in their IEP. And we've been advised that we cannot change the IEP because of this circumstance. The guidance that we have had and the reason that we're moving forward with remote learning and not online, one-to-one, remote instruction is because if we do that and operate business as usual, we have to fulfill all of the special ed services as written. I, I, we, we will have a significant challenge in doing that. The guidance has been regarding special ed and services that we should make our best faith effort, uh, to deliver the supports and services the best we can during this time period. As long as we're making a good faith effort and, um, keeping, uh, maintenance-of-effort-type, uh, documentation about the ways in which we provided services to students, um, the guidance that we're getting is that, that, that will be satisfactory. Um, I know that, uh, Juliana Hanscom is on the, on this, um, meeting. Um, I can't unmute her. I think she muted herself. So I would ask if, um, if she would unmute herself, if she wants to add anything, uh, relative to the guidance around special education. Juliana?
Yeah, it, yep. Um, so it, Kate, Kate's right in the fact that it would, I mean, if we had to go to providing full IEP services, I would need a lot more staff, um, and a lot more time in the school day to, um, to implement the services on the grid. I mean, it would be a whole new world as far as, um, teletherapies and everything of that sort, plus that fact that some, um, some students with special needs, as well as some regular ed students, aren't equipped to be, um, five, six, seven hours, um, online or, um, or receiving instruction virtually that way. I know that, um, Kate's right, we've been, I've been in close contact with Russell Johnson. Um, for those of you that don't know, I'm also President of ACE, which is the Massachusetts, um, Special Education Directors Group. So I've been, in addition to the regular Special Education Directors meetings that Russell holds once a week, there's also been about one every week just with the ACE Executive Board. So we've been lucky in Lunenburg to even have, um, some knowledge of things coming out beforehand that I can start to wrap my head around and, um, and start putting some things into place for students and pa, and families in the district, as well as also providing a small ju, school district perspective to the state to let them know what struggles we are, we are dealing with and what the challenges are. we are dealing with and what the challenges are and what we need. Um, because a lot of it has come to, we need guidance um and exemplars and templates of legal issues and and things we have to put out to parents and things that I need to put in place for teachers. Um, rather than spending that time trying to reinvent the wheel and do it all by myself um or involve our legal team. Um, so it's been very busy, um, but we are, we are moving forward, like Kate said. Um, we are utilizing all of our parent professionals right now to jump on board with teachers and providing small group and in some cases, one-to-one services um with students. Um, but it's a huge learning curve. I I'm not kidding when I say that I have some staff members. I I have a handful right now who don't even have and utilize cell phones regularly. And and that's a fact. And and it's, so it's been very hard to help get them over the hump as quickly as as the rest of us have had to um to get in line to get ready to deliver services for students. But everybody's working really hard. They wanna see these kids again. They wanna get in front of them um and work with them and and help start providing services. And and we're all sharing. We're all sharing amongst each other um with resources and and trying to do the best we can um with getting the best um available services out to kids and families.
So another piece of this um process moving forward, in addition to the academic component, um, again, the commissioner wants us all as educators to have um the social, emotional uh mental health uh lens as first and foremost to make sure that our our students are doing well. Our Behavioral Health Advisory Council um has coordinated um and developed protocols in order to continue to support their students. Um, but we also know that there's an extraordinary amount of stress on on our staff as well as on families. We want to be able to support the adults, our parents of our students. We want to be able to support our staff. This is a very challenging time for many, many people. The stressors are are difficult. And, you know, you can start to feel disconnected and isolated. Um, the the news, if if people are watching the news daily, it becomes more grim by the day. And um people are worried. And our Behavioral Health Advisory Group has stepped up. Um, I know that uh Jamie Millet, our social worker, is on the meeting. Um, I'm going to unmute her as well, um, so that she can talk a little bit more in detail about the work that's gone on um to be ready to support our students, our families, and our staff. Jamie?
Thanks, Kate. Hope everyone's hanging in there. Um, before I get into it, thank you all, because I'm, there's so many moving pieces to making this work, so. Um, thank you to the school committee, LEA, admin, staff, everybody, because it's, it takes a village right now, you know, to to make everything work well. Um, we're still figuring out as we go. So I'll give you guys a quick overview um of what the BHA the group is putting together. Um, we're still meeting weekly. Um, we were on an every three-week schedule or so, but because of the nature of what's going on, we've stepped up to meeting every three weeks. Um, so for students, I mean, the focus is to make sure that they feel connected to the community, to staff, and they know that they can receive support during school hours. So we've set up um virtual access to school counselors, uh to myself, to school psychologists. Uh, the high school guidance department is going to be running some office hours. Um, I'm gonna be continuing my services with my caseload um all via Google Meet. So it's gonna be like a little bit of a telehealth model, um which will be a learning curve for me, too. You know, I've never provided any sort of therapeutic treatment um electronically. So we're all, we're all in this together and learning. Um, we've also made a point to have outreach to all of our at-risk students. So this is any student at any level who receives regular support from any sort of behavioral health staff. So that could be guidance, that could be um school psychologists, they could be providing um you know, getting support in our sub-separate programs, our therapeutic programs, whatever it may be. Those students are getting outreach from their support person. Um, at the high school, we also went through our list from the universal mental health screenings that we did back in January. And any kid who screened in at a moderate or severe level um received follow-up from either a guidance counselor, myself, or the school psychologist. So we made sure those kids um had some outreach as well because they're at risk. Um, special ed teachers are reaching out to students on their caseload weekly. Um, they're emailing, they're connecting with those families. Um, and the other piece is a lot of teachers are embedding some SEL and just general mental health wellness into their curriculums that they're providing on Google Classroom. As for staff, um because the students aren't just affected by this, you know, a lot of our staff are also stressed. I mean, everyone, I think, being impacted by this, which is everyone across the world is is pretty stressed and feeling um the emotional impact of this. So we're making sure we take care of our staff as well. Um, and again, it's really making sure our staff feel connected, they still feel a sense of community, and we're also supporting them in their emotional wellbeing. Um, so we're meeting weekly as a committee, uh the Behavioral Health Advisory Council, to figure out how do we, how do we support staff best? Um, and how do we do it remotely as well? So we've been sending out weekly check-ins um via Google Forms, just to, you know, get a pulse of how people are doing. Um, just really brief, quick check-ins. Uh, what's causing them stress at home, what's causing them stress with work, and how can we support them? So a few initiatives that we're gonna start rolling out. And we haven't started them yet, so they're gonna be in the works for the next couple of weeks. Um, the first is gonna be some coffee chats. They're gonna be virtual. Um, we're maybe using Zoom for everyone to meet together, just to bring people together as a group um to connect, give them some strategies of how to cope, how to manage stress at home. Um, but also just give them that community feel, you know, so people can connect with one another again in a, you know, in a a virtual way. Um, we're also gonna start rolling out some mental health resources to staff. So we'll be sending out some weekly newsletters, um tips just to maintain emotional wellness during social distancing, um send them out some articles, some videos, but we're also going to give some tips about how to embed um some SEL practice into their remote learning as well for their students. Um, we're gonna work on a staff resource website where that information will also be. And we're gonna push out a lot of this info, not just on the website, but also um via social media as well. Um, that just seems to be the the day and age that we live in, and I think it's even more apparent now that a lot of people are getting their news from Twitter and Facebook and everywhere else, so we're gonna utilize that to the best of our advantage as well. Um, some other things that we've tossed out, the idea that might be in the works for the next couple couple of weeks is some fitness challenges and stuff like that to keep staff engaged, um and also, you know, provide that sense of community as well. Um, and then lastly, as for our families, um similar to students, we want them to know that we're still here. You know, we're still here to support them and their kids, um and that they can, you know, reach out to us if they need anything. So in terms of those at-risk students, teachers are providing resources to those families um who may be under some additional stress due to general mental health, you know, socioeconomic status, you know, whatever it may be. Um, so they're getting some additional outreach, um those families in particular. Um, the enrichment website has a bunch of links, you know, just for example, like an article, how do you talk to a kid with anxiety about COVID nineteen? How do you provide that information to them in a way that um, you know, doesn't provide more anxiety, but also gives them some real information, stuff like that. Um, as Kate had mentioned, lunches are being distributed. Kylie's Care Kits are still going out as well. Um, those are being done by school nurses primarily, um and the lunch staff during those drop-off or pickup times. Um, and then lastly, our Kingship Care Group, um which is for non-traditional caregivers, whether they're grandparents or extended family. Um, that's gonna move to a virtual platform within the next couple of weeks as well, so those families receive additional support. Um, I think that's pretty much what we got going on right now. Uh, I don't know if I missed anything, Kate or Juliana? You guys can shine in. Does anybody have any questions?
No. Any questions, anybody? They've really done, they've really done an extraordinary job and um to be able to provide the services that they normally provide um in the school setting, again, required uh consent form to be developed, um so that uh parents are signing off, students are signing off uh to interface in this way over information that is uh confidential. Um, there are any number of things, uh I I I can't even I I can't even begin to tell you the number of decisions that have to be made on a daily basis and the fluid nature of information and guidance uh that's coming. Um, I had really hoped to have a letter out to families a couple of days ago. But information continued to change that caused us to um have to give some consideration. Um, but I think um you know, we've moved forward in a in a thoughtful way, uh doing our very best to ensure that we will be able to support all of our learners and that they will be able to access us. I I know that, you know, there are other other schools, other states that might have rolled right into remote learning the first day of their closure. I I can't speak to the guidance that they received. I I can't speak to their readiness to do that. I can only speak to the readiness for Lunenburg. Um, we were not in a position to do that two weeks ago. Never mind, three weeks ago, two weeks ago. Um, but we've worked really, really hard for the last two weeks to get the things in place that are necessary to roll this out well.
So um, we talked about, you talked about how um equity was at the forefront of developing the plan um and um that we type, we're, are, we are moving forward as opposed to the recommendation that it's all just review work. And that our district will be moving forward and making progress um at some level, moving our students forward and learning more new material. With that um at hand, and I know that parents are looking for some sort of structure in their day with their children at home all day long. Many of them have teenagers who are up now later than they were and getting up very late in the day. We are, I think, parents would like some structure. I think um maybe, I don't know if you can, what this would look like, what a remote learning school day would look like at a different, at each school level for for parents who may be listening or watching live, um like at the primary school. What might constitute a remote school learning day at the elementary school, at the middle school, at the high school? Um, we talked about Google Classroom and the three hours a day, and we don't want them sitting in front of their their devices for three hours, because we all know that many of them are Netflixing and doing lots of other device work through the course of the the downtime right now. Um, so, um, and so what would a remote learning day look like? Um, how will administrators be taking part in ensuring that this is happening at each level? Um, that, how are they following up with their teachers? How are they following up with their parents, administrators? Um, we are talked about the credit, no credit, and at the high school level, have rubrics been designed? Because credit, no credit um still means what are you accepting as quality work to get the credit? And what expectations are being set for our students so that they know that they don't just have, you know, put together junk, submit it and get credit for it. There has to be some sort of guidance for our students and their parents to know that just doing the work doesn't get you credit. It has to be quality work, well-thought-out, constructive um submissions. Um, then um we wanna move forward. Uh, you know, I heard Mr. Cassidy talk about spring break. And we just lost three weeks of school and no one is going on vacations. I'm not sure there's a need for spring break this year, moving forward. I did see that in the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's email to parents said that we don't have to make up any of this this the days going in. We can go to one hundred and eighty-five days. But they also said that school districts could consider making up some of the days. I was wondering if our district was going to consider lengthening the school year, especially if we do not return to school in the regular capacity of returning to school, but staying remote. Because the school days are a lot shorter. Our goal is to progress and not to be far behind as we will be. Um, so lengthening the school year just to the end of June should be considered and taking and having no actual spring break because no one is traveling, no one is on vacation. We've all, we've lost three of school already. I'm just wondering what we're doing about all of those things.
So regarding quality of work, there will be a um a rubric developed. Um, and again, in my letter to families last night, it said more information would be coming out from the school level. Um, you're looking at a model that might be similar to, you know, a check for completed work, a check plus for work that is uh done uh to a higher level. Um, a check minus for work that is uh submitted but of not good quality. And then um maybe uh a recording for not submitted at all. Now, it's going to vary assignment to assignment what the the basic, you know, check level looks like for that assignment. The teachers do that all the time anyway. Right, right now, they do that. Um, I think, you know, that that generally is going to be the overarching model.
Brian's on mute and he has hands raised.
Oh, hang on.
Thanks. Add that, I think a part of this process, too, we're gonna be having teachers give to, so whether it's completed or quality, the teachers can be giving students and parents as well that feedback on
Yep.
all the of the
Correct. Um, relative to providing the structure for the day, um again, we're not on a one-to-one model. Uh, I cannot guarantee that every single student registered with the Lunenburg Public Schools has a device that can be theirs for the duration of the day. I think, you know, um, teachers even during the enrichment period, um suggested how parents could structure the day. Uh, you know, when it might be appropriate to um do a little bit of activity, physical activity, and then, you know, a period of time that we are going to do some reading, and then a period of time, you know, for um some math, and then lunch. So teachers have provided this sort of um structure in the past, uh through the enrichment period. I would imagine that that will continue. But we we gave some consideration to, well, you know, do do we say that uh the primary school, they do their work between uh eight-thirty and eleven-thirty? And, you know, the elementary school does their, we 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 gave some consideration to that. It's very complex, and I think the more structure we put to things, the more challenging it's going to be for our students to actually engage and complete it with with some level of success. Additionally, our teachers are at home, working remotely, and juggling their own children at the same time. They are committed to doing this teaching, but some of them may have to commit most of their time in preparation and review of work, student work, later in the day. Because their stu- their children are are working on school as well. Again, I think, you know, the did, there's new legislation that came out, um and, you know, I'll ask uh Mr. Cassidy to unmute himself in a minute. New legislation that came out that allows for um employees who are impacted by COVID nineteen, whether they are infected themselves, caring for individuals who are infected, or just juggling uh, you know, the fact that they have no childcare and schools are out. They are eligible to submit and apply for two weeks paid leave. I think that the more restrictions and structure we put on teachers and demand, but you know, during certain hours, you have to be on your Google Classroom doing this lesson, or you're going to fully replicate the high school bell period structure. Um, I I think I I think we're we're inviting uh many of our staff to say, I can't, I can't juggle that right now. Um, I I'm, I'm going to apply for that leave. We want our teachers to be with us and We want our teachers to be with us and teaching. So, we gave consideration to all of those things and, and the potential impact. And the potential for benefit. Or. Or negative gain, right? So. Not having the day. As structured as it would have been. With, with students sitting in chairs, in classrooms, on campus. We feel. Is truly in the best interests of the quality of the work. That is going to be put up by teachers. And completed by students. And that's the ultimate goal here, is to make forward progress with learning. So, so we did give consideration to that. Relative to the right of a, of a district to extend the school year. You have the right to do that, but I, I have to tell you that. The teachers have been working during this closure, so to extend the school year. Means that we will be paying them all per diem. If we extend the school year, because they have been working.
Yeah, I just, it's just in there, I just wanted to make sure we touched on that for the public.
Definitely. Definitely. I mean, we can certainly uh, schedule a meeting for this coming Wednesday night and we can. Uh, put on an agenda, discussion around the April break. Um, there are, there are different ways to look at it, right? Um. You know. Just getting this remote learning going and getting some momentum might be a great thing to be able to continue that momentum. Um. If there's uh, the April break as scheduled. It gives us a chance to take a pause and evaluate, uh, how did the first two weeks of this go? Are there adjustments that we need to make? Uh, when we resume following the break? Um. Honestly. It gives all of the staff um, a couple of days to take a breather. I, I cannot impress upon you all enough that. The demand has been significant to. Even, even to pull the enrichment. Pieces together. We had to create a new website, teachers had to find quality. Um. Enrichment materials uh, to pull together. They had to coordinate. With their, with their colleagues and their grade level teams or their. Departments or, um, you know, similar courses, et cetera. There, there was a lot of work that went in, like, right out the gate. On, on March sixteenth. Teachers hit the ground running, trying to get this all pulled together. And as that was, you know, we, we got that established, we already were transitioning with the IT uh, department. And I, I just want to remind you, uh, we essentially have um. One and a half IT tech people. They, they collected with the, with the help of the custodial staff, every single cart. That held Chromebooks or iPads, transported all of that to TCP. They went through every single one of them to make sure that they all had keys on the keyboard. Um, that they were functioning, that they didn't have cracked screens, what have you. They went through every single one of those devices. We then figuring on uh, the results from our survey. Um. The administrative team came to TCP and all of us worked. To disinfect inside and out. Approximately three hundred Chromebooks. We then, they all have an ID number on them. We then assigned them to the students that were, um, had indicated that they needed a Chromebook. We then put them in alphabetical order, labeled them by name, put them in alphabetical order by school. And coordinated a pickup. Um, that, that implemented social distancing to keep everybody safe. Um, the, everybody has, has been working. Really, really hard, and I can tell you, you know, at the administrative level, central office in particular. The information. Uh. The flow of information, i- it's just non-stop, it's ever-changing, that every, every new bit of information we get. Now there are other implications that we need to consider in, in making decisions, new questions uh, arise that need further guidance. The entire staff has been straight out for three weeks. So. There could be a case made to take the breather and I, and I, I understand that the kids haven't been straight out for three weeks. The parents have been straight out for three weeks. So, you know, we absolutely, if we, if we stay with, um. You know, the, the, the April break week. Um, we absolutely are prepared to put up. Assignments and work that can continue. Um, so that the students can stay in that routine of accessing their Google Classroom and completing assignments that were posted. It's just that, you know, maybe the teachers don't have the quote-unquote office hours, they, they, they aren't accessible by email. Um, during a given period of time. I'm sure, I, I know our staff, I, I know that they're gonna respond to emails if the kids are working, but. If we require that, right? Um. I don't know, I, it, it, honestly, superintendents. Uh, across the state are, are wrestling with this notion of. You know, what to do now. It, it, we're not sure, are we, are we coming back? In, in May, maybe the second week of May, if. If we're coming back, um. You know, maybe the break is warranted at this time because we may want to have more. Days face-to-face with them in June, rather than remotely in April. There are lots of factors um, to consider, so it's not, it's not a truly easy decision to make, but I, I, I. I'm happy to, um, you know, schedule a meeting for, for Wednesday evening and um. And allow us all to have some discussion around. Things, and I can come, I can come back to you with a. A recommendation and the rationale for it.
That might be a good idea. I, I just think that I'm sure there are other people who are wondering about April vacation.
Sure.
Uh. Just because. They'll just be getting started and then there'll be a break.
Yeah, and I think once upon a time, you know, parents were, were asking early on with the closure, are you, are you canceling April vacation? Because I think that they had hopes that they would be able to.
Vacation.
Go on their family vacations. Clearly, that's not happening for anybody, um. You know, so there are different circumstances now, so I, 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 I think it's, you know, worth some uh. Consideration and further discussion, um, to, to move forward.
Okay, um, does anyone on the school committee have any questions for um, Dr. Burnham?
This is Jim.
Jim, Jim Levesque?
Yeah, yeah. Um, I would be remiss, um, if I didn't point out that I have seen posts on social media. This pariah of everything, um, that have indicated that not all teachers are being as engaged as. You have indicated. Um, I know based on just the communications that you shared with the school committee. Um, and the parents that I believe that most of the, most of the students and they are, most of the teachers have engaged. In some semblance of, of uh, activities in getting this to this point. The only reason I mention this is because it is a topic that I have seen repeated mul-, many times. On social media, um. I think in, in as much as the, the people aren't seeing behind the scenes. As, as I think you have. Explained. Very well what's been happening within the schools for the last three weeks. Um, I don't think that that was maybe transparent enough to. To parents who expected to be hearing from teachers. Uh, you know, on a daily basis, when it was. And then what those guidelines were to those. And what they could communicate. And when they can communicate and how they can communicate. I think you've done an excellent job today in outlining. What's happened in the last three weeks and that the efforts that you, the administration and the, and the, and the, and the instructive staff. Have taken. To get us to the point where. We are able to transition from in-person. To remote learning opportunities within a three-week period of time. And basically turn everything around. On a dime. So first of all, I want to thank you and the administration and all of the teachers who have put in the hours on getting this done. Um. And I think, I would hope that the parents who are watching on Facebook and listening to this on Zoom. Uh, also recognize. The work that has been done by this administration and, and this team of, of dedicated teachers.
So I'll speak to, um. Um. The guidance that they were given. Um, there were teachers that wanted to reach out and started pushing out information and things for their students to do. Within the first couple of days of the closure. Um, the guidance was wait. Wait until we can complete. Um, the compilation of all the enrichment activities and we roll it out together as a district. We had given them guidance. You know, work together as a grade level team. Decide what you're doing and you're all going to stay in sync with each other in terms of the types of things you do. So as an example, you know, moving forward, if, if a first grade teacher wants to. Um, have a morning meeting like they, they do when they're in school. That's, that's great. They can absolutely do that. They wanted to be able to do that during the enrichment weeks. And I said that was perfectly fine as long as they all did it. We know that parents are comparing. Um, you know, wh- what each teacher is do-, and, and they do it regularly anyway. Um, even when we're in school, but we, we knew that there would be, um. You know, a heightened visibility here and, and some scrutiny here, and that's why we strongly have engaged. Teachers in terms of working together and working as a unit. And staying in sync with each other. Um. Initially, we, we told them that the, the platforms that they could use really stick to email. We, we gave them the guidance that they should be available to parents during the school day hours by email. Parents might have questions, they might want to know how to make um, some enrichment activity more appropriate for their child who perhaps has. Um, some, some learning disabilities as an example. Um. You know, I, I had teachers who, that first week. Felt such, um, an emotional. Uh, need to connect with their, with their kids, especially the primary school teachers. They wanted to have the kids be able to see them. They asked me about, you know, can we, can we read stories and stream live on Facebook? Well. There are complications there, right? Is that the right platform? Does it keep kids, should kids be watching you on Facebook? Um. What's the legal guidance there? Um. You know, and then there are the issues of, um, uh. Copyright. Uh. There were two groups. I think there were, I think it was Scholastic Publishing, and I think Harper was the other one. That pushed out communication that first week. That they were relaxing. Their regulations so that teachers could read their publications. On video to their students. Not all publishing houses did that. So, when I say that it doesn't, it's not as, it's not as simple. As it might. Appear to be, right? And, and teachers had great intentions. They, they wanted to start to find whatever format they could to start to connect with their kids. We felt pretty strongly that I, I needed them to slow down before they, they got themselves uh, into a situation that, um. Really, uh, would have been something a- against, uh. Legal guidance. Um, so. It, at least initially, they were asked to communicate with families either by phone. Or through email. Um, you know, we didn't, I, I didn't put any expectation that they had to call every family every day. Um, or, or email every single family every day. But, um, we did give them the guidance that once the enrichment materials are up. It's go time. We want you to connect with your families, um, send them messages, um. Connect with individual families, et cetera. I, I think the, you know, the point that, you know. Maybe not all teachers are, um. Uh. Engaging with, with as much enthusiasm as, as others. I think it takes me back to. Um, comments earlier in the meeting. Not everybody's comfortable moving to these new platforms, right? Um, then this notion of teaching remotely, uh, even, even enrichment and. How do I engage with my students via email around this enrichment work? It's timing some people, um, it really did. Uh, that's why I say, you know, initially. Um, you know, I, I would really appreciate it if the parents uh, could just. Maybe try to understand that, um, essentially every teacher is now a first-year teacher. This is new for everybody. Some people, I said, are, are going to be poised to, you know. Make a greater splash in this platform, right? That they have some knowledge and skill already. But many of them do not. They're still learning how to use all these tools, and quite honestly. Um, we limited the number of things that we wanted to expose them to during the last week and a half. Um, because it's overwhelming. They're learning so much so quickly. Um, we didn't want to inundate them with all kinds of. Um, features that they can, like, some of our teachers use Padlet and Flipgrid, and. We can continue to provide trainings for teachers so that. You know, once they, they feel like, okay, I create, I created my Google Classroom. I actually made it through the first few days of using this new platform. I feel good about this. Now I'm ready to layer on some more things. We will continue to provide training. For teachers around all kinds of different. Tools that they can use to help engage students and engage their learning remotely. Um, as we continue to move through, so I, I would, I would just, you know. Say that. Don't expect that, that every teacher is gonna be a rock star, uh, the first week. Uh, using this new remote learning. But I think that you will see over time that, that people will really start to rise to the occasion. And the neatest thing. You know, for me, um. This event. Forced us to think about teaching and learning. In a, in a new way. And teachers across our district, across the state. Across the country. Are learning new skills. To provide instruction and engage students. This has forever changed the landscape. You cannot now unknow. What you've now had to learn. It's not like when we go back to a, a brick and mortar uh, building. That, oh yeah, all right, everything's back to normal. Teachers have learned all kinds of new things uh, through this event. That they can't unlearn. I, I, I fully expect that many of them are gonna continue to use the new tools for teaching that they have acquired through this. Closure. And I mean, you know, even operationally, um, w- we're looking at, um. Platforms that can potentially help make things a little bit more efficient. Like signing documents that need to be signed. Um, we're exploring uh, the possibility of, um. Uh, DocuSign as one model, and there's another, um. Model that may not provide all, all that we're looking for, um, but we're looking at, at the. The ways in which we might be able to. Manage all the paper flow that requires multiple signatures, IEPs included. Um, with remote uh, electronic signature process. So, you know, I, I think even operationally, there are things that. That are changing that will. Um. Continue and, um, actually improve the efficiency of, of what we do.
Hey, the message I'm hearing is, is, um, have patience, and our teachers are drinking from fire hoses.
Yes, yes, they are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um does any of the other school committee members have any questions? Wendy? Wendy's on mute. Did she do that herself?
Yeah, but unfortunately, when when you mute yourself, I have to unmute you.
I know, sorry, sorry.
And I have to find you in the list.
Wendy Pertrand.
Um, yes, just. For clarity, can. Students and families expect that they will have. Any time within Google Meet where. They would have actual inter- like a meeting as we're having now, so that students could have any. Interaction with each other. As well as their student, something in real time, even if it was as simple as a morning meeting, a brief morning meeting at the primary school. I guess I just wanted to have that. Clearly laid out. As a or a note as a possibility.
So we're, we're gonna use the um Google Meet as the, um I guess, approved platform, if you will, for this type of. Interaction between um teachers and other service providers like guidance counselors, et cetera, with students. Um if they want to um be able to engage visually like this. We talked about. You know, is that something that we're gonna require every teacher to do on a daily basis? And we we felt that the platform. That we wanted to require them to use on a daily basis was the Google Classroom. There are eh there are teachers who feel very comfortable with Google Classroom and are, you know, potentially um eager to. Add in the Google Meet platform. Um as I said, there are, there are many teachers who who have really and truly missed the class interaction. With their students. They feel, especially during this time. You know, for them to see each other and to see their teacher's face um and be able to um interact in real time. Is is it's something that they really want to be able to do. There are other teachers that feel very, very uncomfortable. Um and it it's gonna take a little bit of time, I think, for some folks maybe to warm up to this idea, but essentially. You are in people's homes. You're you're in maybe twenty-one or twenty-two homes at one time. Um it's it it's an overwhelming thought for some teachers. So again, we wanted the transition to the instruction to happen. More quickly, so we we discussed the idea that. The the Google Classroom would be the foundation everybody's required to use. And as people develop um knowledge, skill set and and comfort with this um. Video instruction. That they can start to layer that in eh to their instruction, but we did not feel that it was um. Prudent to make that eh mandatory right out the gate because so many teachers are already stressed out. About having to move to a remote platform at all, and they're learning the skills. Really in a short amount of time. So a- again, we wanted to be able to move forward. We we figured that uh Google Classroom was the place eh that we could count on all teachers to engage daily. And give them eh you know, the go ahead to use certain other tools. If they wanted to be able to move beyond the Google Classroom. And I think, you know, too, as. As teachers eh use that platform and and. Can speak directly to their colleagues about the benefits of using the platform. Other people might eh you know, get up the courage to to jump into that pool as well. But yeah, we we did not want to start off with that being a mandatory component, so. Parents should not expect that every teacher is going to be doing that, and the thing about the Google Meet is that kids have to be able to log on at the time. Of the meeting, just like Zoom, right? Like the meeting started this morning at eleven, everybody needed to be able to hop on at eleven. There are equity issues there too, right? If if not all the students can. Hop on at that time, they're they're being a little bit left out. So we also caution them to around. You know, if you're going to do something through meat that you feel is. Necessary instruction to advance the learning of all students. That this should not be the format. Uh because you might not be able to get all students, and if they can't get on, they've missed the instruction. Um and that leaves them behind. So, you know, we've encouraged teachers to, i- if it's instructional in nature that every student. Needs to have this instruction, and it might, it might be a science teacher doing a demonstration of something. It might be an art teacher. Um showing kids how to eh. Do a project with paper. I don't know. But if it's truly instructional in nature and the kids need to have it in order to move forward with the curriculum. Video record yourself providing that mini lesson and post it.
Um just to piggyback on that. It's not mandatory right now. Should closures last longer? Do you think you could transition into not a daily mandatory, but maybe a weekly mandatory? Where they're engaging in conversation, especially at the high school level honors and A P classes. Dialogue and discussion is really key in those classes, a debate. Um to move forward in progressing your thoughts as a as a high school student. Could would could that be rethought if they extend the break? The year?
Yep, so as I said earlier, um you know. The first two weeks of this eh model would bring us up to. You know, the April break. And I think, you know, let's let's see how it goes for the first two weeks and and then let's eh make some decisions from there. Um earlier, you asked about, you know, um accountability and how would administrators know if teachers were doing what they were supposed to do? Or if it was quality, et cetera. Every Google Classroom. Will have the administrator. Added on as an instructor. So you can add people as students. Or or as instructors, and every single Google Classroom will have an administrator. That can have the teacher view, if you will, so that they can see the quality of student work as well. Um and they can see that the kids are logging on, checking in, doing the work that they're supposed to do. And, you know, we talked a lot about, well, how will we know? Because Google Classroom, i- it's not, it's not like. You know, this meeting where I can see a list of all the participants that are logged on. It doesn't provide that for you. Um and there's really no way to determine if everybody logged in at some point during the day. Which is why we said it would be important for teachers to include a daily. Question of the day, or, you know, share something that you learned new yesterday, or, you know. Um why my favorite color is purple? Something that the the kids have to do daily. Not a not a not necessarily an um instructionally based. It can be, but it doesn't have to be. But then we can see if students are logging on daily, and and when we see that students aren't. That's when eh the administration is gonna have to do the follow-up. There might be any number of reasons why students aren't logging on. They might actually be sick. And they wouldn't be coming to school if they were sick, and they're not logging on because they're not feeling well. They they might um not be logging on because eh somehow their device is not operational, and they don't know. Eh who to reach out to or how to reach out to get that remedied. There might be students um that we still haven't been able to connect with families that don't have a device. And we will continue to pursue that and get them access to a device so that they can access their learning. So we do want to know that students are logging in every day. And and we want to, it's like schools in session. We want to know that the kids are here and they're learning. And and we are going to follow up. Kids can't just opt to just check out for the rest of the year without us. Pursuing eh you know, their lack of engagement.
A a very important question for someone who has. Never missed a day of school in their entire life. What eh they are, like, I'm not, there is a high school senior that has that. There is attendance. I don't know how you're going to take attendance, or is it just a blanket that. It only was effective until the day that you canceled school.
Yeah, I mean, these are the the little. That we run into on a daily basis, right? Because people are gonna ask questions and they want to know the answer, right? And we wrestle with these things every day, throughout the day. There are, there are any number of questions like this that we that we have to um kind of think through and figure out what's the best way forward. You know, I didn't have this conversation eh with Mr. McGrath yet. But eh we certainly can, and I think, you know, maybe. Maybe attendance through March thirteenth eh might be where we we make that determination of perfect attendance. But eh I'll eh I'll throw that question eh in his lap and he can. He can wrestle with his guidance team and eh and figure out the way forward on that one.
Well, just attendance in general, because um I'm sure there are some that were on the fence. Um going into March with their absenteeism. At certain levels, and now without a way to ensure that people are actually attending school. I I these are all little tiny questions that add up to the big picture.
They absolutely do.
All right, and 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 it's like every day I think of something new, or someone sent me a message about something I didn't think about or asked me, and I have no idea. How to respond. And um you know, it's it's a lot for us as school committee members to try to um. Be able to communicate with our constituents or just even ask or send them your way. To find out the answers, so that we're all moving forward and we all have the same plan, which is to educate the students. To keep them busy, to keep them happy, because I know a lot of them are not. So, yeah. Does any of our school committee members have any questions for Dr. Burnham? No, no, Jim, no, no, no more, okay.
Anything else that the central office staff might want to weigh in on or add to?
Yeah, anything? Okay, no, okay, so now we, oh wait, I see Julian. Julian is waving her hand. Is that her muted? She can't unmute, yeah.
Unmute now, all right, now now I'm unmuted. I just wanted to chime in on um on how we're keeping track and set on the special ed um side of things. So I asked all of our related service providers and special education staff, um starting from that first week to start checking in with families at least once a week. So that was all service providers on their I E P should have been checking with parents from day one when we were out. Um and then I've also instituted this week that they each need to have a remote learning plan for students, um for each of the students on their case loads. Develop that plan based on goals and objectives, so the parents will know what to expect, that services are gonna be carried over and how they'll be addressed in the I E P. And then every liaison is keeping a service log, um actually every service provider, but the liaison is housing it in one document. So that we can see every interaction that's done from a specialized standpoint to deliver services to students and have interactions with students and families. Um all of the administrators will have access to that in their buildings. I'm going to have access to that in their buildings. Just so we can make sure that there's equity even happening across um the specialist spectrum for students getting that support. And that'll be check-ins, paraprofessionals are gonna expect to log in, related service providers, teachers. So um we're even ramping it up and with um all of our students that have special needs, and. I've also had um some staff members reach out, like Title One, um E L L, um teachers are doing that as well, and even some five oh four families. I think we're gonna start logging some of those services too, where where families visit that they their students might need additional support as well. So we do have a learning plan in place in addition to what Kate also um mentioned.
Great, great. Okay, so are we move, are we ready to move on to public comment? School committee, you have any other questions, anything? No, no, okay, so we can move on to the public comment for anything that is school committee related. Um I see there's a bunch of people online, so Mr. Passios. I can't see him. Mr. Passios.
Yep, I think I'm on with you. I had wanted to ask a question eh earlier eh to Mr. Cassidy if I could through you, the chair. Um regards to the numbers that he eh gave earlier. For eh the food program through the end of the year and extended day numbers through the end of the year. Do those numbers come within the budgeted eh dollars for those particular eh items? Or were those just raw numbers through the end of the year, and you haven't compared to what, compared those to what's budgeted in those areas?
The food service costs, the extended day program, the extended day program prior to the last meeting. Is outside of our budget because they run on their own. But let's go back to Mr. um Cassidy. Mr. Cassidy, can you answer his questions?
The um the amounts that that were provided are eh salary and wages. For eh those staff members. Eh the the chairperson eh is correct that the um. Those particular eh positions, those that those particular operations. Fall outside of the eh the local budget. They're strictly paid by eh revolving a fund, revolving funds. So eh those are actual costs. And um the the local budget will will need to absorb some of those costs. During the end of the school year. So because we we have a eh hiring freeze, eh what we have a eh. A purchasing freeze, there there is some money that can be applied to to maintain those programs eh running. Uh the superintendent mentioned earlier that eh we have been approved for. Through the federal government, eh we received a waiver. Eh to eh for eh serving lunches and getting reimbursed for them. So eh so that'll offset some of those costs eh moving forward. So the the numbers I gave were were the cost. Eh a- as we move forward on a reimbursement, th- those amounts will go down.
So in my eh my brain that says that was gross cost and that's not necessarily net cost. What what I'm trying to keep eh track of is costs directly associate, additional costs directly associated. With the situation we find ourselves in, eh and I'm sure everybody is keeping track of those numbers because they may very well be re- reimbursable. Thank you.
Yeah, just just to follow up on that eh. You know, eh Mr. Launder and I have been through this, these rodeos before. So right at the onset of eh. Eh eh of this eh pandemic, even before it was a pandemic, we we started. Eh monitoring and creating systems for any additional costs. So we we are maintaining that eh in eh when. Eh we have an opportunity to go in for reimbursement, either through the state or the federal level. I'm not sure where the money will be. But eh we'll be ready eh to submit that eh reimbursement.
And as you know, that's very important that you start right from the beginning, so you have accurate data. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Passios. Mr. Beardmore, do you have any public comment?
I do, good afternoon. Follow on to eh, oh, I left my eh left my background up from my meeting yesterday. You guys will have to bear with it. I think we all need a little bit of levity. My eh eh fo- eh one follow on and then and then sort of a a broader question, eh but on the financial questions that Dave asked. Could I ask for or even? Um, uh, could I ask for or even suggest that perhaps we keep a um, a public and transparent ledger um that's regularly updated around additional costs associated with the crisis? Um, whether they're on budget or off budget as as uh, you know, in a revolving fund or something um and any anticipated reimbursement, just so that we man, we maintain continuity and transparency. Uh, and one of the examples that I'll give you is we were at a finance committee meeting this past week, and I briefed what had happened at your meeting on the twenty fifth. Um, but some of the numbers, you know, extended to certain dates, and it was unclear in my head as to whether those numbers were for April twenty fifth or May fourth or end of the school year. So um, there's a lot changing, and I just think whatever we can make transparent, public and in print um would would benefit everybody. Um, the the second, the second comment i- is actually a question, or again, perhaps a suggestion. Um, back to the decision that was made at the last meeting around continuing um, uh, continuing uh payroll for cafeteria workers and extended day um up and to the point of the the current state of emergency. Um, I'm aware that a lot of businesses right now with hourly employees are running financial analysis on um the the actual uh dollar uh payments that are going to employees today as a means of continuing paychecks out of the organization's pocketbook versus furloughing uh those employees, laying them off, and letting the unemployment system pick them up. Um, because in particular of the extended federal benefits that are being added to the state benefits for employees uh going on unemployment for a period of two months. Um, the federal government is adding over six hundred dollars per week uh for those employees. Uh, and so just a suggestion, if we haven't already run those numbers, that information, to my knowledge, was not available on the twenty fifth of March, and and I'm hoping that that's something that we're looking at and uh uh possible savings uh for the town if if that were to be relooked at. Uh, and then lastly, um, very similar to my request uh on the ledger, I recognize, and by the way, um, kudos to the superintendent and the entire staff. And I know everybody in their professional lives is going through enormous disruption, but uh but you guys have done uh incredible work and uh and very thoughtful. Uh, and I commend you for it, and I I wanna encourage people um to have as much patience as we all can muster uh in a stressful time. Uh, think about what we're saying and putting on social media, uh be thoughtful about the questions we're asking. But um, to that end, i- if there's a way, and I know that, you know, you've added a lot to uh your weekly communications that you've put out and letters to parents. Again, perhaps in a ledger format, particularly around policies at this point um that students and parents need to be aware of, I think that there might be a way of of getting that all into a single document, right? So the um, the attendance uh question that that Mrs. Sroka asked. And again, I don't know that a decision has been made there in terms of participation, but, you know, whenever a decision has been made in terms of expectations of parents or students um that we can consolidate that to a certain area so that people don't have to go looking for it. Um, because, you know, i- if you, right now, if you try to look for new information on the town website, there's so much information that's been put there, there's an awful lot to sort through. Uh, so as easy as we can make that uh information available in some sort of consolidated uh way that does not necessarily have information from the Board of Health to sort through, uh I think would be, I think would be helpful. So, that's it. Thank you all very much. Appreciate your time today.
Thank you, Mr. Beardmore. Do we have any other public comment from the public? Can you see any hands being raised?
Brian.
Brian, Mr. Okay. Is he frozen?
He looks frozen.
You were frozen, so repeat.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
The state hadn't canceled uh MCAS yet, so I reached out to Senator Tran. And he had said that he's considering sponsoring or co-sponsoring legislation uh or a letter requesting cancellation of MCAS requirements.
Yeah.
But mentioned that the federal government has already issued uh waivers as well, so hopefully we can get that done.
Yeah, they issued waivers in March, March twentieth, and and said that it was up to the state to cancel them. Yeah. Yeah.
So what had come from um uh the federal level, it has been um it has been put out there that there will be a waiver at the federal level, but the state hasn't actually received anything as a written response to the, to the application uh for the waiver that they submitted.
Okay, so they did submit a waiver. The state, okay. Well, that is also good to know. Do we have anybody else? Oh, Jim.
Yeah, just for um the point of in- information, I went to the uh Lunenburg Public Access Cable page on Facebook to watch the to also stream this meeting. I don't see any questions there, um but there are people watching.
Oh, okay. You don't see any questions?
I I don't see any questions there. Um, and I don't know that we can take questions from that.
They, um. We'd have to join here or go on the Facebook meeting, because I saw somebody on Facebook had posted a comment that said they had no questions. Um, but that was early.
I thought, saw that in the Zoom meeting.
Oh, I saw that. I saw one in the Facebook. I don't know. I don't know. Do you see anyone raising? I know, we are. Yeah, see.
And I don't see anything in the chat on the um, on Zoom either.
No, nor do, I don't either. So, if we have no other public comment questions or public comments, I think we're, yo, Dr. Burnham.
I just wanna thank the committee for the thoughtful discussion around what this transition looks like. I think the questions that you ask, um, again, provide me an opportunity to provide some clarification for families around some things and um, that, you know, I sincerely greatly appreciate um your questions and the conversation today. Thank you very much.
And thank you for everyone for making the time on a Saturday morning, unscheduled, typical school committee meeting. Um, much appreciated, and I'm glad that we were able to do this so that you could present the the remote learning plan, and we could ask questions and have dialogue and understand what the thought process was going into the plan, because I really think that the public and the parents need to know what your thought process was and what the plan is, and and hopefully it will only be until the first week of May.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, hopefully.
And and I would say that if any parents um through this next few weeks um have questions around their particular teacher, definitely that chain of communication, right? Put an email to the teacher. If you're still not um, you know, happy with whatever the response might be, then you know, you would be directed to communicate with the administration of the building. Um, so, in other words, um funnel through through the schools first. I'm sure some of the questions will end up coming my way because they're things that we need to make decisions around um and provide clarity for, uh, because maybe uh questions are coming up more than once. Um, we do have that FAQ sheet. We're, we're going to be looking to update uh the FAQ sheet that we had posted. We'll probably have um FAQ two to to provide um some historical archiving of the information that uh we're putting out over time.
And maybe in those FAQs, you could have the student expectations and policies part that Mr. Beardmore talked about. So that that information could be out there for um, what, for parents.
Yep.
Okay. So, okay, then I think we're done. Are we, we're done? So I'll take a motion.
I'm Leighton. Motion to adjourn.
Can you move it for a second?
All right, all in favor, roll call.
Mrs. Shoka.
Yes.
Mr. Leighton.
Yes.
Mr. Levecq.
And I have to unmute.
Mrs. Bertrand.
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good weekend. Go wash your hands.
Everyone.